Alright, so it's 7:04, I'll call the meeting to order. Regular meeting, the Mount Holly Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, here and done, the agenda is approved. Approval of minutes, we sent, Faith sent, our clerk sent out the set of minutes from, was it July 5th? And I believe also June 14th? Is that right? Can anybody confirm that?
I have the July 5th one.
She sent it out attached to the
Agenda.
Agenda email. Is it 14th?
I'll, no, in a second. Actually, I don't see it attached.
And then since-
Oh, no, that was her report, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't get it yet, I gotta pull up the report too. Let me see if I can find it real quick, I should've done that in advance, apologies.
I don't have a, um... No, maybe it's not.
It was in the, I thought it was in the agenda email.
I don't have.
Let me just take a look. Did she send it, she sent it as Planning Commission, I think. That's what might be confusing. June 21st, regular meeting. So she sent out both sets of minutes. Since then, Andy and I took a look and corrected, I think, three or four typos in the July 5th minutes. Should I review those? Has anybody had a chance to look at them to sufficient detail?
I looked at the July 5th ones, I'll move through all.
We'll try to do them together if we can. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
I move, so move.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Rigid seconds. Any discussion on the minutes or any changes? All in favor of approving both sets of minutes as distributed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed?
No, you slipped in.
Any opposed, there's no one else here? Minutes are approved, thank you. I have a report from, I'm just trying to pull it up just now, a report from Faith. She's not able to be here today. So I'll just read it to you. Dear PC members, what's up?
I read it.
Okay, I'll read it aloud anyway for the video. Since I will not be able to attend the meeting on Wednesday, I'm noting here, for your information, the VCRs I have received going in lobby kind. I'm not even sure that's this one. From 788 Dolly Road, north, an enclosure of carport and conversion of carport to livable space. And I assume Danny Cavodo, but Cavodo, 1284 Hillville Road, replacing old house in parentheses, double wide. I don't have those VCRs here, she must have them in her files somewhere. She goes on to say, I have also received copies of wastewater permits for Patch on Summit Road for a new single-family residence and Shaker on 155, amended permit for replacing failed system with increased flow. So they're both here, if you'd like to review, I would, but I'll do that later.
Does this mean that the state is forwarding to us? How did we get these?
Faith reminded Carol that she needs to, or she ought to, and we would appreciate copies every time she gets one for recording.
I see.
So Faith and Carol are coordinating on that, so that's, it's nice to have.
So the state's been sending them all along?
No.
Yeah, we're just getting, the town getting them when they're being filed to be recorded.
Right, that's correct. So a condition of the permit is that they be recorded in the land records.
Oh.
The clerk has been getting them all along for recording. The confusion comes where she, she, the clerk, I think it even goes back to Sue's time. It says CC, Mount Holly Planning Commission, and the assumption was that we were getting a copy.
Oh.
And we, of course, were not. And I asked the state why, and they said they're not required to. It does raise the question why they continue to write it on there.
Yeah.
I've stopped asking certain questions when it comes to the state, it's just the state.
They write the rules.
It's just the state, they're gonna do it that way. So there we go, that's Faith's report, the administrative officer report. I only have a couple of brief things. The first is, I think it was Faith, Andy and myself attended a VLCT training in two parts. The first for planning commissions with the general duties, I think that would be a fair description in responsibilities. And the second was, two parts essentially. The first being discussion, sort of roundtable about short-term rental issues and regulations. And the second part of that morning was the responsibilities of a Board of Adjustment or DRB. So I wrote down a couple of notes for the short-term rentals discussion since it has been a fairly hot topic in this area, neighboring towns especially. There were three different people that were invited to speak on the subject from Woodstock, Dover and Killington, all areas where there is a fair amount of activity with short-term rentals. They're all, I mean, sort of similar to Ludlow in the sense that they're kind of resort communities, tourist communities. The Woodstock representative, I think, was an attorney, and he had a couple of good suggestions. One is that ordinance should have a clear purpose, set out findings, clearly define harms to be prevented, have a housing study as a basis to support it in court if needed. Determine units that were converted to short-term rentals through the land records. So I kind of do a little bit of research ahead of time if you're trying to encourage long-term rentals or other types of housing. There was some discussion about residency requirements. Some have a requirement that someone be available within 30 minutes if needed for maintenance purposes. Require a host or project, a property manager onsite or nearby. So that kind of alleviates some of the concern of having this sort of like ghost town effect or like who do you call for, you know, if you have a disturbance or anything. The requirements for applicants, I guess it would be, in Woodstock, is the contact info. They have meals and rooms tax and options tax. They have a registry, they have an occupancy limit, that's sort of like fire code stuff. They require a fire permit, and that's something that's, since this meeting happened, the state has, I think, put out, maybe you've heard this, the state has put out guidance saying that fire permits are in fact required for short-term rentals.
What's a fire permit?
Construction permits. So that one up there in the middle on the top, so building permits. So if you do a short-term rental, you're supposed to have a building permit. It has to have-
It's hardwired.
There's all kinds of stuff.
But why would you have a building permit?
It has to be safe. Essentially a commercial building. So the question was-
Oh, it's not for construction, it's a permit to occupy the building that way?
Both, yeah.
But you're not constructing it?
No, but in order to run it as a commercial-
When you're converting private residents to a commercial operation, you have to, I guess, have it inspected and get-
That's what I'm understanding. So there was a little bit of a uncertainty, I guess you could say, about whether short-term rentals were commercial properties, were essentially lodging. And now the state has said yes, definitively they are, so. Woodstock also, and these are sort of just ideas for any other towns wanting to do similar things and whether they would apply to this town or not, I don't know. But, so they also have a cap on the days per year that a dwelling can be used for short-term rental. So in other words, it can't be 365, it can, you know, be some, maybe like half the year, in other words.
Is it an actual prohibition? Or is it just that if it exceeds a certain number, then there are additional requirements to be met?
I don't remember.
I didn't?
They probably did answer that. I have a feeling it's a prohibition. It said it would be a violation if, no. To run the business, you have to follow these requirements. And his name was David Rugh, R-U-G-H, Rue, Row, Esquire, so he's a lawyer. And he cited court cases, which I thought was kind of interesting to back up his claim, so. The next was from Dover, also at Stowe, I mean, Snow, Mount Snow. They have a, you know, similar to Ludlow, they have a very low permanent resident population. They require fire permits to be recorded in the local land records in addition to them being approved by the state. They do not have a certificate of occupancy requirement. And they're not allowing the zoning administrator to enter the premises without permission, which I think is probably a good idea. So it'd be kind of strange to just have the ZIA enter, but I guess some towns are doing that, but. And so they goes on to say, requires local emergency contacts to be posted in the unit. You know, you'll have people from, generally from out of state who have no idea who to call, so that's a good idea. Requires one point of contact for each short-term rental to be available within one hour 24/7. So that's basically an hour turnaround, whereas the Woodstock, I think, was-
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, right. And, yeah, I don't think that's, that's probably, seems like a reasonable thing, hours, maybe you can be pretty far away for an hour. They require bear-proof trash cans and recycling receptacles, which I think is a really good idea because I will tell you from firsthand experience, renters have no idea what bears are about. My next-door neighbor is a short-term rental, and one fateful night, they left lobster out in a garbage bin, plastic garbage bag. That was a disaster, I was picking that stuff up because, you know, of course, it went for the lobster, which is just about the smelliest thing you could possibly think of.
And it all came to your house.
Well, the thing is, the bears are indiscriminate, they just tear up the bags. And so you've seen how they work, right? They grab the bag and they go off into the woods and they play with it for days, they'll come back. So it was everywhere. So anyway, I thought that was a good idea.
I've got a couple of those bags, I still ain't found them.
Yeah, right. And the last was Killington. Where they have a very, you know, disparate number of short-term rentals. It's like, I don't remember the number, but they had very few permanent residents in that town, which, I mean, sort of makes sense. They record the fines, and this, I only put what's different from the others. So they shared a lot of the same attributes. But Killington records the fines and the violations in the land records to dirty the deed and title. So they found that they were having problem with people, enforcement, enforcement. So there were people that just weren't bothering to pay the fines, and they said, what are you gonna do? And instead of going to Superior Court and dragging the town into a very costly proceeding, they found that if they just dirty the title, that's enough to scare people into compliance.
How do you dirty the title?
Because you want to clean-
No, how did they dirty the title?
By recording the fines and the violations, so it's-
It becomes a lien.
It's a lien, basically.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Your bank's gonna want that cleaned up and-
You can't sell-
And you can't sell it.
Can't be financed.
I just didn't know what you were saying.
And it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, so it seems like a pretty cost-effective way of getting compliance. I mean, and you wouldn't want to have something, that's one of the arguments against, you know, these types of regulations, like what are you gonna do, go to court and you're like, oh my gosh? So that seemed to be a pretty, pretty creative way of getting people to do it.
Oh, yeah.
So they also have a rule of no hotels in residential areas. Because what they were finding was people were having sort of ad hoc hotels, which is more than 16 units. They also had people that were shoving dozens of people into essentially what were single-family residences that could only hold, you know, safely hold maybe 10 at the most, maybe eight, you know, just to maximize their profits, so. And then they also had another sort of interesting point, all, I think all, maybe you remember differently, but I think it's all of the money from everything relating to this ordinance goes to the fire department. Because they found that since the, this sort of bubble, they have not been able to, well, their fire calls have gone up exponentially, or at least, you know, by many factors. There's lots of reasons for it.
Because of the tenants, of the renters?
Yeah. And, and you know, false alarms and, remember that a lot of these places have automated security systems or fire systems. So they're using all of that money to fund their fire department, which seems like kind of good, like especially-
A bad idea.
A bad idea.
We don't know how to get rid of the ash from a fireplace.
Oh, yeah, I mean, a lot of, we've had calls over the past few years that are from renters with the same, you know, chimney fires and stuff like that. So anyway, that's what I got from it. Now, Killington has 3,600 short-term rental properties from what I understood. Maybe I got that number quite a little bit wrong, but that's a whole different ballgame than something we'd be looking at. And they actually have to, it's so, so monumental, a task of management, that they actually use a website called GovOS, govOS.com to manage this whole thing. That alone costs thousands and thousands of dollars. But they bring in, I think they, they net, I think it was quarter million dollars for the fire department. Even with the software, yeah.
Do we have any sense whether short-term rentals is becoming an issue for residents here in Mount Holly? Or is it something that's on the horizon? Or is it controversial, whether it's an issue or not?
There's a lot of them. There's a lot of them in Mount Holly.
So, I mean-
More in Mount Holly than you'd think.
There's, there's, there's a lot, and so I can only give you what I've heard. So anecdotal evidence suggests that there are people that we know in town who are having real, real trouble finding a rental unit. There are people who have been displaced from their homes, or people who have flood damage, there are people who have gone through divorces or whatever. They're in-laws, all those things are having a real hard time finding a place to live.
That's like the number one issue with short-term rentals is that they drive up the cost of housing that, so that local people can't afford it.
Yeah, I think there's three, three kind of main areas. So one is the conversion of other types of uses, either long-term, single-family use or multifamily to short-term rentals, so it's conversion. And then there's the effect on turnover in the market. So like market forces cannot really operate, so we kind of expected a certain kind of turnover in the market for the, like, the last, you know, few decades.
You mean like a vacancy rate?
Vacancy rates, yeah, turnover of ownership. And that no longer seems to happen because there's really very little incentive for anyone to ever dispose of the property because it's such a moneymaker. Right, so it used to be that your maintenance costs were balanced with your tax burden and eventually somebody would say, with the, usually second homeowners, right? You'd say, I just can't manage it anymore. Like the maintenance, ongoing maintenance costs overall balance with the tax burden.
I saw one on TV last night, they happened to mention the cost of it, and it happened to be down on the coast. And it was nine grand a week.
What was nine, what was the cost of?
Rouble. Short-term rental, nine grand a week.
Right, I mean, it's, in around here, I mean, especially, I mean, all year round, but especially ski season. I mean, you get, you get quite a bit of money for them.
Sure.
Nothing that somebody who was renting long-term could afford, I mean-
You get a lot of people around here that go south in winter time, and so they let their house out to somebody, maybe somebody they know or whatever, for a price.
Right. And so that, so there are, I think, you know, objectively legitimate uses for short-term rentals in ways that you can offset the expense of living in this, I mean, we live in a very expensive town. There's no way around it, the heating costs, the maintenance costs. I mean, if you live somewhere that didn't have heavy snows, you had to clear every week, it'd be a lot easier, right? And the heating and all that. So there's some real legitimate reasons why you might want to offset those costs, especially as you're getting older. And that's where some of the residency requirements come in from other towns. So, you know, if you're living on site, a lot of these towns will give you sort of a blanket exemption.
Right.
If it's just like an in-law apartment, you know, that's great, just supplemental income. It's not actually degrading the community in any major way other than that's a rental apartment that wasn't available before, so the conversion part. And then the sort of third tier that I've noticed people mention is, let's see, effects on culture. So there's a couple of different ones. One is this sort of vacancy, vacant feeling of a community. There's the effect on local volunteerism. There's also sort of like the party ethic of many renters, I mean, they're on vacation, right? So that's-
You get drunkenness and drunk driving and misbehavior.
Supposedly a really big problem in Killington. I don't know if it's the same here.
Well, you gotta remember how many buyers Killington's got up there too.
Yeah, so, so anyway, those are kind of the different things that I've heard. But, so going back to the beginning, it's all pretty much anecdotal, we don't have a housing study. And so what this first gentleman suggested is that there be some kind of housing study as the basis for any, any consideration of regulation. I think that sort of makes sense and probably, you know, put some meat on this and understand it more scientifically, but. See, that's what I would probably suggest we investigate, is like what that, what's involved in a housing study. I think we made some sort of passing mention of it in the town plan draft, like a housing study might be warranted to understand the effect of affordability and so on.
Right, now renting of that type, you have to have your house inspected by the-
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal.
Right.
And your fire alarms have to be hardwired.
Right.
And you also have to have the CO alarms. There's several things that right now is supposed to be park fault and ground fault
Right.
in different areas and your electrical and so on.
Sure, yeah. And all those things, well, a number of those things you mentioned puts stress on the fire department. Because, you know, I don't know what our numbers are, I haven't looked at the stats, I don't believe it has them somewhere. But we get a fair number of fault, mostly false alarms for CO and smoke. That's a big deal, that's one of our, our-
We, the most, in the past, the most calls we've had is probably about 60
Yeah.
in a year's time.
Well, I mean, if all short-term rentals, you know, we could probably pull the numbers, pull them off the various websites.
And the problem is with ours, a lot of them aren't short-term rentals, a lot of them are homeowners.
Homeowners, yeah.
Yep. No, I'm just saying, if, if all those things happen, you know, the, those kind of monitoring devices in all the short-term rentals are, calls are gonna go away, for sure. So, okay, I think, I think that was it, let me see if I have it here. Oh, one more thing. Oh, and then the last part of the session, which I was only sort of half tuned into, probably would be more interesting for you guys, and it's like what a Board of Adjustment does. And I, we didn't get the video yet, but when we do, we can share it with you. I think that's, you have to log in with your own account, your own ID onto the VLCT portal, but-
Supposedly that video will be coming up within the next week or so.
Yeah, so that could be good. Yeah, I'll send that around when it's available. Lastly, I don't think I printed it, but I sent it around. I verified that the state is now showing our ERAF rate at 17 and a half.
Our what?
The state match-
Emergency relief.
Emergency relief fund.
Is that the higher amount?
Yeah, so I just wanted to verify.
Who would need that?
We are, I spoke with Jeff today.
Just got that through at time.
Yeah, no, it was like really late time, so I wanted to make sure that they had recorded it. Because I had reached out, it's actually ironic, like the week before, or two weeks before, I reached out to the state because the town hadn't sent the state the confirmation of the approval yet, so. I just wanted to make sure it all went through, and it did, it's on there. FEMA knows that we were entitled to, or the state knows that we're entitled to the extra money.
Are we one of the six towns that have been designated?
We, we are, yes, we're getting the money, so I spoke with Jeff today.
What one town it was then?
I don't know for sure, but Jeff confirmed today that FEMA has already done a walk-around.
Okay, good.
And I don't have the number, but it's the estimate from FEMA was millions, so.
Yeah, FEMA's set up an office in Ludlow.
No, they moved it up.
I mean, from Mount Holly, I mean, Mount Holly.
Yeah, but FEMA's set up an office in Ludlow.
They left, they went to Floodbrook, now they're going to Woodstock.
Okay, well, because they just announced it yesterday.
Yeah, it was on the news tonight. They were interviewing the woman.
Well, they were here for two days and then they went elsewhere with the Red Cross and other people.
And they, they, and Gail's real estate office is another place where if you need money-
That's a small business administration for businesses, right.
So what I'm hoping we can do going forward, well, I guess sort of last on that is, good work everybody because I mean, that's gonna, just all that work, I mean, it was like a year's worth of work, but it's, it's gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollar check to the town because of-
In addition to what they would have gotten.
In, because of the past, yeah, so that's a pretty big deal.
That's huge.
Going forward, there are, we're getting some questions here and there, Jeff's getting a few, but I think we're gonna continue to get them, on questions about what kinds of funding are available for, you know, various improvements or personal expenses. So I think Faith and I will work with Jeff, Jeff's got most of the information. Right now, I think the guidance is make sure you take pictures, make sure you talk to your insurance company, and make sure you talk to that two-on-one website or whatever it is.
Pictures, pictures, more pictures.
Lots, yeah, document everything, so that should be, if we get questions, that's the, that's the sort of refrain, is just document. Because all of the money will come in later. So that's, that's all I got for the report, so let's move right into the main stuff, which is very brief today because I don't have a lot, hopefully brief. Don't have any subdivisions. We did get, and I think Faith responded, I'm not entirely sure. We did get someone on Freeman Brook Road asking about a possible subdivision. I don't have much information about that. I don't know if she responded to it or not, just asking about what's involved up toward just past Luscious Acres, so. On the, just, just before the town line. Don't think we had anything else email-wise. Oh, there was one thing in my report I forgot to mention, I totally punted on the, on the grant. Apologies, I know you guys probably were expecting that. So I told the select board that I couldn't do it either.
We're gonna have to cut your salary.
Yeah. So I did talk, I talked to the state about it, so I got that much done, that took a couple weeks to coordinate with them. And they told me that it's so hard that, and they are applying for VTREMs, it's so hard that they are employing a contractor just for the grant application. And I think at that point, I was like, peace, so. I think it's something we should consider, if they're gonna hold it again next year, offer it again next year, I think we might want to consider that, but I think it would take some months to prepare for it.
Well, why don't we work with the state and have them apply for the ones we want?
We could try to, yeah, we could try to. I'm gonna send them a message this week and say, if we, see if we, it's real late for even tagging along on theirs. But I'll see if, you know, we develop some sort of rapport with them, maybe they can pull some extra-
Most of your annual quarters are gonna be over the Vermont roads, 103 and 155.
Do you know Brian Roberts?
That's, yeah, those are the big ones, what's up?
You know Brian Roberts?
I know the name. But there are two of the people that are actually working on, they have ecologists working for VTREMs, so they're the ones that I guess we're pursuing it. So anyways, that I forgot to mention. So anyways, that I forgot to mention. I don't think we have any other correspondence, not that I can think of, any new business? No, okay. Old business, town, town plan, uh, let's jump right into maps. This is one that, um, I think very rightfully so was critiqued a fair amount last time. I think you all had some pretty good, you know, uh, suggestions and criticisms of it. So, I wanted to show you what I've changed and added. So, one of the criticisms was that it was quite difficult to tell the different types of roads apart. So, I've done a couple of different things. One is try to emulate, um, the official VTRA's highway maps, the town maps. And use, it's a little bit hard to see on this screen. Oh my gosh, is that the, the mouse is super slow. So, for legal trail, it has a little LT in the dotted dashed line, it's very small here. Probably could be a little bigger. And for impassable, a little U, cuz in the VTRA's known glacier, it's untraveled. They call it untraveled slash impassable. That's very small, I didn't realize it would look quite that small on the screen. So, the other changes were increasing the size a little bit on the state highway and paved highways. Making private roads a different color, which is actually the same color as driveway, but the different width. Since private roads and driveways is a very fine line between them, some are, you know, you sort of go back and forth whether it's a-
Some kinda qualify for both.
Yeah, it's exactly right, cuz like, uh, some start out as driveways and then turn into private roads or vice versa, yeah. I don't remember if I had these culverts on there before, uh, maybe not. So, this is, this is what, uh, like a shorthand that the state highway maps use. It just means, uh, the VT culverts data, so town culverts and bridges. Triangle and circle, and then these are sort of what they call large structures. Bridges or culverts, and it says or because, you know, box culverts only grab a bridge or they're culvert. And something I added actually today, I believe, you know, so I've been sort of looking at things with a little bit of a fresh perspective after the storm. Also including hydrologically connected roads, which is something that is part of the MRGP, which is the Municipal Roads General Permit. And those are ones that the state deems have a severe erosion risk, and that they're ones that we, as a town, have an obligation to manage stormwater. So, that's worth knowing.
Ninety percent of them are.
A lot of them, unfortunately, and that's not every town, it's just we are a wet town. But I mean, we're at least-
We missed out last night.
What's that?
We missed out last night. They got a good one south of us.
That's what I saw, yeah.
I was driving through that.
Wow, really?
You were lucky, no one.
I heard there was another landslide down on the Gulf that wasn't there.
No, that wouldn't surprise me.
Proctorville?
Yeah.
Wouldn't surprise me cuz we were going right through there and you couldn't see fifteen feet in front of you.
So.
Cuz the bakery down in, oh, was it Cavendish, got eight inches of water in the basement again last night.
So, um, what we talked about briefly was putting parking on this, I didn't. Cuz I thought it was already kind of getting crowded, and I think we had another idea to put parking on the recreation one and, you know, the parking for the bus stop and public parking, I mean, there's, there's already two bus stops down here areas, you can't really see anything else anyway.
Yeah.
It's getting crowded there.
That's fine.
And they're not really well-designated parking areas anyways, so.
Those people don't even know they're there.
Right. So, what do you think about those changes? I mean, I can show you where they come into play, that was just the legend. So, here is one area of the untraveled or impassable part of Stewart Road, right there.
That's a lot better, a lot easier to see.
Easier to see?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, maybe, maybe could be a little bigger for the ladder, huh?
Well, it's different enough so that you look for something.
Yeah, these are, again, these are thirty-six by twenty-four inch posters. So, hopefully at that resolution, you can see it. And you can see the culverts in practice here, the circles and the-
Where?
These cyan, I guess you'd call that color, light blue.
So, each of those circles?
Is a cul, a town culvert.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, you look, you kind of get a sense of the monumental task of maintaining a road system, I mean, all of the hydrologically connected roads need, the state requires proper ditching, and I mean, this is the stuff that actually influences storm damage, right? So, it's the size of the culverts, um, the state of the culverts, this, the quality of the roadside ditching. It's like that's kind of the, what this is capturing, is that there's, you know, potentially dozens and dozens of culverts to keep track of, so. Jeff and Bovee and the road crew and in a smaller extent us, I mean, it's quite a, quite a big task. So, the only legal trail on here so far is actually in Wollingford. And this was a question we had last time, as we were talking about Cracker Camp Road, and whether or not it was discontinued or whatever. So, it actually is a legal trail. So, actually in Mount Holly, in Mount Holly, we do have a legal trail at, at Buttermilk Falls. However, right now, I'm using purely state data for this, it's just the same as what the state uses. I didn't wanna start adding or changing anything yet. But we do know that there, oops, what happened there? We do know that there is a road missing.
Road or, or trail?
Legal trail.
Yeah.
They're using the term road very loosely, I guess, then. Right here, it's designated as a driveway, just in the E nine one one, driveways are very, are not really direct.
Not seeing where your pointer is.
On the far right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, the colors aren't really showing up all that well, but there is a little, like a little line here. And that is, that is a legal trail, we know it is. And we know that unfortunately, there's a bridge at the end of it. Um, so, we're gonna try to figure out whether we can get that added to the state's information too. The legal trail is definitely interesting to have. I don't know-
So, did you say it's, that's a road that's not on what map?
Any map, really.
It's on this one?
No, it's only shown here as a driveway, right there.
What? Okay. So, you're saying that that indicates private?
Right, the driveways aren't really tracked or regulated by the state at all. Our town highway map shows nothing there.
Oh, okay.
And we do have, we know for sure we have a legal trail there, and I think it's important that we, you know, uh, express our ownership.
What, what's the status of the Healdville Trail up Okemo? I mean, that's a trail, it's in Mount Holly.
So-
But it's-
I'm using the term, um, legal trail often, and it, it is something-
Designation that-
For roads.
For a road.
Right.
But they're often not, I'm just curious, would, would something that's a trail but not designated by the town as, as a legal trail, be shown on a map like this?
No, so legal trails are town rights of way.
So, the squiggle of-
The town owns them.
Right.
Right.
Oh, wait, what's the one at the Healdville Trail then? Is that the snowmobile trail or what? You've got a, you've got a line there.
That is a state forest highway.
Okay.
So, the town, at least today, although it wasn't always the case, has no ownership of roads in this area whatsoever. So, the Healdville Trail is a hiking trail that is, yeah.
There's no town right of way.
No, correct.
Got it.
But neither is that one you just said.
But that's a, that's a, it's a- US Forest Service road, so that's why you're showing it.
State, state, sorry.
I hate to use it as a road.
It's in pretty good shape.
No, this is, this is a real road.
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape.
This is what the VAST trail is using nowadays, and, and they've done a significant amount of work on it over the past.
The one I, the one I've been up down there on rescue calls was not a road.
This is a pretty good road.
Well, that might've been a while ago. After Irene, I believe it was, the state put a ton of material there. And this, so this is, this does continue, I mean, we, I don't have the recreation map we looked at last week, but it's, um, this is used by the VAST trail in winter, it's gated at the bottom, and we will probably get rescue calls on this.
Okay, the trail, the trail I did the rescue on ran parallel to the VAST trail, not up the VAST trail.
So, it was either Katermount or the hiking trail that Andy was mentioning.
And it goes up to the fire tower.
That's the Healdville Trail's hiking trail, and that's rough, very rough.
Oh, you don't know the half of it.
Oh, I do.
We, we tore up some equipment.
Yeah, I believe it, I was up there just a couple of weeks ago. And, um, one thing I thought about, I was sort of mentioning as an aside, is that, um, the sugar lease is over here, and technically speaking, it shouldn't be on a recreation map cuz it's sort of not public access. Which, I've been trying to get information about the boundary, I don't know if you knew that, did you know that?
I, I don't know what you're talking about.
The sugar lease.
What sugar lease?
Mark Turkle has, uh, what, twelve thousand tabs up in there?
It's pretty, pretty big operation.
I knew that, but why would that be on a map?
Because it's not public access, which is a little bit counterintuitive for a state.
Meaning the public cannot use it?
Not really, no, I think it's a part of the lease agreement, that it shouldn't be.
Hmm, he, he's got people that do use it.
No, no, Mark can use it, what I'm saying is-
No, no, he's got people that cross-country ski through there. And it's not Mark.
Okay.
You're saying they're doing it without his permission or his knowledge?
No, they, he, he's talked, friendly conversations with them and such.
Right, so, I'm trying to find out the boundaries of that, and then we can consider whether we wanna mention that on the map as something that, you know, cuz we have that map that we just shared last time, talked about last time. And it, you know, suggests that all that area is open to the public. And I've since learned it kind of not.
Well, that, that sugaring operation is changing in the, in the, either this year or next.
What do you mean, cuz of the lease? Well, the lease-
Lease is changing.
Okay. Well, I don't know the nature of the changes, but I knew it was up for renewal, but, so anyway, just mentioning that as an aside, I'll try to find out more information about what we can put in there. I just don't wanna suggest, you know, people are free to use that and then, whatever, I think you see what I mean. All right, so other things on this, is the blue outline enough? Can you see it? So, it's behind the black top in some cases. So, you can see it pretty easily when it's a dashed line, right? So, this is the hydrologically connected road segments. And you can see it pretty clearly, I think, on the, you know, class three roads. But can you see it okay when it's behind the?
On Healdville, I can see it.
I can, I can see it, I'm looking at it on my screen, it seems pretty clear to me.
All right, cool, that's just one thing I wasn't sure about. All right, so, let's see. You can see the way that the bridges, the long-span bridges are, are represented here, and that's very similar to how they're done. You see here at one oh three Station Road, it's kind of, you see that-
That's, Station Road comes in at the top of it, doesn't it?
You mean this bridge, the one oh three bridge?
Yep.
What do you mean, the top of it?
The other side, no, I guess-
No, Station, wait a minute, Station Road comes in at the bottom, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
The other road comes in at the top there, the other little loop.
Green sign.
Yep.
So, the other thing I'll mention is that I had a discussion with Andy about this just the other day, I think it was the other day, I've lost track. And also Dave Martin, about whether or not, how do I get the, get it up top here? About whether or not this section of Sawyer Hill is class three or four. And seems to be recollection that it was converted to class four, but I need to get some confirmation.
See, I have no personal recollection of that happening, I do recollect people telling me that it had happened.
And Dave said the same.
I, I would suspect it's class four, cuz the town doesn't maintain it anywhere.
Except-
Wayne Taylor maintains it for his own private use.
I know, but, um, there is, uh, what, what made me start rethinking what I had thought to be the case, was back when, um, we did a forest legacy project, uh, up there, and the town's consent was required. The town said, uh, they'd consent as long as, um, uh, we agree that if the town ever wanted to widen that stretch of road, they could. And I, that led me to think that it may be that the reason that it's not plowed is not because it's class four and they don't have to, but because it's too narrow for them to be able to plow it. And that they wanted the right to widen the road so that they could plow it if they ever, but anyone ever thought that was desirable.
And I do know, I mean, it's sort of plausible, because I do know that one of the reasons that it's not plowed is the width.
Is the what, the width?
Yeah, but whether or not that's-
Yeah.
The chicken or the egg, you know, I don't know. But I'll share with you that Dave's, Dave Martin's recollection, um, yeah, I had this conversation with this morning, that's, I'm trying to remember when I talked to him, it was this morning. And, um, he seemed to remember someone telling him, cuz I don't think it was firsthand, that in the process of conserving the land on both sides, the, I guess it was either Wilderness Community or Wilderness Foundation at the time, sort of part of the agreement, whether with the town or what have you, was that the road be reclassified as four, so that it not become a shortcut to the Tyson Store through Patch, um, Patch Brook Road.
I don't think they have worry about that.
I, Patch Brook Road would never seem like a shortcut to me, but that's what he remembered.
It is funny though that, um, we encounter people on the road who've been directed there by their app.
GPS.
And they're, they're going on roads that you wouldn't wanna walk on, let alone drive. Yeah, or the Hortonville Road, uh, but, um-
Or the End of Perry Road.
Dave's recollection is similar to mine, except that, and my memory could be wrong, but I think he's kind of collapsed the timeframe because I think that concern and that rationale for, um, reclassifying it as four, uh, predated the conservation of those lands, I think it happened much earlier.
He thought it, the time he suggested, or maybe it was you, maybe again, it was, um, was he, tell me if it was you or not him, but I thought he said the early eighties. Or was that you that said that?
No, 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 I wouldn't have said that cuz-
Okay, then he said that it might've been the early eighties.
That would make sense, but, you know, we didn't, that land wasn't conserved up there until ninety-six.
Okay, so maybe unrelated to that conservation.
Yeah, yeah.
Another issue.
That, that could be, and, and that's about the time that we bought our land up there, so-
Okay.
That, that all makes sense, but-
I think it means yet again, we gotta sort of dig into some, um, the proceedings book and the land records and see if we can dig something out. Cuz, um, I've asked Jeff, I don't think he's had a time to, to read my mail yet, but, um-
I'm surprised right now, Jeff's got time to read his own name.
Yeah, well, I, I, I talked to him today for, for an hour or so, but we didn't get into.
Talked for an hour or so?
You were lucky you had five minutes.
Well, we got a lot of things going on, so um.
So I have a question. Why is, why are the roads that are not open listed as. Uh, hydrologically connected?
Okay, say that again for me.
Well, you said hydrologically connected roads meant that the town had to maintain them.
No, so they.
You mean they're at risk of erosion, right?
Primarily that, yeah, so. There are requirements in our municipal roads general permit, which is their state stuff. Um, that's m- makes us, obligates us for certain types of maintenance and repair. To roads that are hydrologically connected that are different from ones that are not. Now, if it's a road that we have no maintenance obligations for, it's sort of a little bit of a moot point, I think. Whether it's hydrologically connected or not.
That's my question. Why is it listed as? Well, as an example, Heelville Road between north and south.
Heelville?
Or, I'm sorry, Hedgehog Hill.
Oh, Hedgehog.
Yeah, parts of Yale Road or.
The road pass?
I mean, there's Frank Lord Road, there's a bunch of them.
Quite a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Well, Lord Road, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if that's even.
Why would Yale Road have this hydrologically connected stuff on it?
I don't know.
So does that come from a state map?
And that might be a, another good argument to make it a legal trail, cause, oh, so, so one thing, let, let's take a step back, so. Even when it's untraveled or impassable, if it's a class four road. Remember that the town is still obligated to maintain it. And that's sort of one of the arguments to move things into legal trail status is only then do we get out of requirements. Right, so that's.
So do you have to do? Okay.
So, so whether it's impassable or whether it's.
Look at Yale Road, is that, what is that?
Four.
It's class four road?
The hallway. It's impassable according to the state, but we know that it's not. You can actually get down it, it's just very rough. It's not impassable in the sense of, you know, uh, Shumpike, parts of Shumpike or um, parts of Stewart Road or. You know.
Yeah, cause I've been through it.
It, it's, yeah, it's used for recreational purposes. It's kept open by Yale Forestry. I mean, there's lots of reasons for it. Um, I actually don't know. Let's, so take a look at the other ones. Um, you know, Branch Brook Road past Don Eteman's house, I think that's probably. Not passable, but you thought there was still a bridge there. I don't know.
There is a bridge way out in the wood.
Um.
I'm sorry, which road are you looking at at the moment?
He was looking at Branch Brook.
End of Branch Brook here, up the hill to Flanders. I mean, I, I don't know what the state of that is. I mean, I think the town could probably lose that and not, not shed a tear, but um. Yeah, it's just like these impassable roads. I think there, there are reasons why moving them to legal trail status sort of makes sense to me. Um, you don't have to do anything to that anymore. So.
What is this town highway? Uh, just above Blue Farm.
Above meaning?
Up the hill from.
Oh, that's, you know what that is, don't you? That's the Unterman Road.
That's a, a public road?
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah. He made sure of it. He made sure of it.
Well, he didn't, he didn't put in it.
No, he made sure it was remain, so never sunsetted, so um, that is his access to the land that's for sale. That little stub, this right here is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, it doesn't go very far.
No, it doesn't. It's, it's um, it's Heelville. It's old Heelville.
Oh, I know where it is. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and there's the, the bridge over that, the bridge over that drainage is railroad iron, uh, railroad steel tracks. That is, that's the, the girders, if you will, the, the I-beams are, are railroad track.
Now, there's one that goes through there somewhere, right in that exact area. That goes through and connects up onto Frost Hill. Cause it goes right through past Ted Hall's house.
Well, so there is, there is an old, um, you know, road or, you know, barway or whatever you wanna call it, sort of, um, that goes right through Blue Farm. But he's sort of collapsed it now. It's now the stone wall. Do you know the one I'm talking about? If you're, if you're going up the hill. If you look over in his pasture on the, on the right-hand side, there's a, there's a line of trees and that used to be a road.
Above the pa- when you go past the house?
Just past the house up the hill. Yeah, there's a row of trees and that used to be a road and that went up to like the back of.
It goes up to the back fields up there.
Right, where it used to be, um.
And then now the back fields, it was a connector that went over through to Frost Hill. And went right by Ted Hall's house.
Well, I know, you, you mean connected to like, connected to Tier kind of, right? More like to Tier.
Well, no, it connects to, uh, go to that spot.
Cause Stevie Flanders had a log landing right on, down on the end of it.
So see the driveway that goes out straight at the end of Frost Hill and then curves at the last second?
Yeah.
That's it.
Right, that's the Wine Drops.
No.
Yep.
Yeah, Tier, so the, the, the whole bunch of culverts there on a dashed line. That goes up to the Wine Drop family.
Oh, I, I was talking about the orange, the, that one up above.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, that's Ted Hall's house.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I don't know of that one, but I, it, that's over by um, Coronto and Egan.
Yeah, it's over by Danny's.
Right?
Yeah, he's before the.
I don't know Hall exactly, but um, so we, one thing, another sort of thing that, that we don't have yet. And I don't know exactly how to get it, is I don't know where and who maintains the list of private roads, but we have a number of new private roads. This is one of them, Okemo View Lane. So it's listed as a driveway here. Anyway, I'm not, I'm not too bent out of shape about it. But um, it sort of would be helpful for, you know, like to turn this into a useful like fire map. Um, to have all the, the roads be accurate, but I haven't found a good source of data for it. Um, and the other, the other new road that I know of.
Well, that Okemo View Lane there is where they're putting in that wedding pavilion.
Right, right, so it's just sort of a driveway here at the moment. And the other new road that I know of is the one that's down in the Andy Block's former subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
There's one that we did down on one fifty-five.
Well, what about the one up to uh, Sawyer Rocks?
Well, that's not a private road as far as I understand it.
What is it?
Driveway.
Oh.
So private road is any, any, and this is something we should really consider for future subdivisions, by the way. The state requires any access that has more than three addresses on it. And that could be just units via private road. So be able to have addresses set, you know.
As opposed to a driveway?
Yeah, so the numbering, you know, the, you know, the sort of um, addressing in the general sense, like. You can't just say like unit number three off of. Um, I'll just invent a number, two hundred Route fifty-five. You can't just have like unit four of, you can have, you have to have a private road that's. What is the name of the one they came up with down there? I can't remember. Jack Frost, is that what it is? Yeah, so they have to have like two Jack Frost Road, right, so. So it's kind of ironic a little bit because I don't know if you remember, we got a question from one of the realtors or one of the agents or attorneys. The day of closing on that property down there. And they said, well, did you guys mean for this to be a proper private road or what? And we said, well. Not really, cause we didn't have that in our decision. Um, but in retrospect, probably should have been because in fact it is a road. It has to be able to get a fire truck down. So it's a road with a, a name. So, anyway. I think we're gonna have a lot more private roads going forward and uh. You know. We'll see.
There, there's one up on Hedgehog Hill South.
A private road?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's a driveway.
Oh, alright.
But you come up to the last house up there and there's a turner. And the town road goes this way and this road follows right along parallel to it on the other side of the stone wall and then goes up to a house.
Is that Cross?
I don't know what the gentleman's name is. I've been up there once.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about.
Cross.
You're talking about past the chases, right? I think it's in the right area.
Yeah, it's, it's beyond, it's the last house up there.
Yeah, yeah, I think I know what you mean. You can see the, with the town, the town right away is basically closed in at this point.
Actually, it's open, but you won't get through. I won't put my truck out through there, but I used to go out through there. No, actually, why I won't go out through there is the mud.
Oh, okay. I went out there to see if I could get through one time a couple of months ago and I just drove up and I was like, no, I can't.
Oh, you only got to the first hole.
Oh, alright, so anything else on this guy?
But yeah, this one runs right parallel to the town road and he didn't wanna fix the town road. Up the hill.
Yeah.
Because then people would use it.
Yeah, huh.
So he put in a super long driveway.
You can't prevent people from using the town road, but you can prevent them from using a driveway, so. Um, here's another bridge that's sort of questionable down here. We talked about a few times, this is Greendale Bridge. And uh, there is a sort of, it's listed here as a driveway because there is a camp out here.
There's a camp out there and then you get higher up on the mountain, there's a couple other camps.
Yeah, so uh, what do you think?
You mean, what do I think?
Oh, there, there's not much more.
I don't have to work on it anymore. Is there kind of?
No, it's not much more you can do to it without making a mess out of it.
Yeah.
I have only one minor comment. I think it's excellent, but. And it's probably self-evident, but um, I don't think the legend. Uh, indicates um, what streams are. The streams, of course, are blue. But, but they're not shown there amongst the.
Right. Okay. Add streams to the legend or take streams off the map?
Add to the legend.
I would add them to the legend.
Okay.
They need to be on the map. That, that's a real.
Well, I think, cause we have the culverts and stuff.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, it may not be necessary, but I just sort of noticed that. I, I was assuming all the blue lines were streams and I went to look and it didn't say, so.
Right, okay. Yeah, it, it, you know, at first glance, maybe, I mean, it, it's a lot clearer on my screen than up there. On my screen, the blue is so different that, from the black that, you know.
Yeah.
But up there, for some reason, everything gets kind of smushed together.
Well.
Tens blends a little bit.
Probably has something to do with the reflection for the light on it.
Okay, so um, no, that's cool. I can do that.
That's an easy one to fix. Anything else?
No, it looks good.
I chuckle. The stream that comes up through the, on the map, there's marked as Mill River. But you look in the fishing game books and you don't find it.
Oh, I don't know. What does that mean?
That's what I'd like to know. What's that mean?
Um, well, it, the Mill River is a really tricky one because, and there was a hydro, um. Hydro-morphic study. Um, done of Mill River, but the really tricky thing about Mill River is, which one is it? So, you know, like if you look at the White River, for example, that's up north, there's the name, the branches. So it'd be like branch one of the White River, branch two and so on. Mill River, we've never done that, so.
Everything's the Mill River.
Everything's the Mill River in town on the west side, so every stream is basically the river.
According to the map there, there's only one marked Mill River.
Right, so, so you can see here, it, which is sort of like defies logic a little bit. The headwaters of the Mill River is up here on Hedgehog Hill Road. Not the actual hill, but Hedgehog Hill Road. And, you know, naively.
Reality, it's atop of Western Mountain.
Well, you'd, you'd naively think that this is the headwater over here, this, you know, the wetland here up on one fifty-five, cause that's the kind of farthest it goes. And, you know, in some, in some places, they show the Mill River coming up here along Tarbleville. So, you know, it's, it's kind of like every single one of these streams is the Mill River, so it's one of these.
The one coming down, down through Tarbleville at the bottom of the hill there is part of Mill River.
Well, it's a thing, part of.
The one that goes up to the dams. It's a part of it, but it's not Mill River.
Well, they're all part of it.
And so it's invariably called Mill Brook. I mean, you remember that, like, that's kind of where the.
But you don't find any of that, you don't find any of that in the fishing book. So how do you look up the rules for fishing it?
I don't know.
I ain't figured that one out either.
But so I'm, I'm gonna throw another one at you. Okay, so we, we're pretty, at least understand that this is Mill River down here, right? Mill River, yeah. I mean, cause it's sort of, most of the tributaries have merged. Okay, well then. Well, then what's this? What's this right over here? It's also Mill River.
No, well, actually, that's listed as Mill Brook.
I see Mill Brook just as often as the, the one that comes out of Star Lake. So it's, you know, what can you do with names?
But.
And there's like, like, there's um, Mill Brook Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Which is on this side, not along, anyway, so what can you do? I throw my hands. I don't care.
Well, I'd just like to know how to look them up so that I can legally fish.
Yeah, I know.
You know, without getting into too much trouble.
Right.
Well, you've got a return, a tournay, a retainer, just give him a quarter.
But the bigger question, so, is for some of the other ones. So this little stream, um, right out the door. I've seen on maps called Smith Brook. But is that the actual name? It's really hard to know. And. The one, I've, I've heard people refer to this one that goes up to Perry's as Coal Brook. Have you heard that too?
I haven't heard that one. The one that goes up by my house is Fowler Brook.
Yeah, that one, those, those are named streams.
And that one goes clear through to the top of the mountain.
Yeah.
Over in Wallingford.
But yes, the names, the names are hard, but like this is a fairly substantial stream, the one that goes up to Perry Road. Um, and as far as I know, it doesn't have an official name, so what can you do? Um, alright, so anything else on?
I'm sorry, which stream was that, that you were looking at?
It was up through the Perry Farm.
I'll show you. Um, it's a pretty substantial stream that comes into what I might call the north branch. Of Mill Brook or Mill River. Um, this one here.
Okay.
And it's a pretty substantial, although not um, modern bridge there. And goes all the way up here and there's, there's massive wetlands, right? In fact, they probably should be shown.
Yeah, it's uh, there's a, like you said, massive wetlands right here on the Perry, Perry Farm.
Yeah, so I mean, I think maybe I need to make another note here, because there should be. A giant wetland right here that's not showing up.
Well, how do you, how are wetlands showing up anywhere?
Well, I have, what, you want the technical answer? I have an emergent, emergent wetlands layer here. That's this stuff, but it's not, okay, I'm just gonna make a note. I gotta revisit what wetlands are shown because it's sort of implying that's.
The pinkish purple is wetlands?
No, the sh- sort of, um, you can't see it on this screen. You have to look on yours.
Oh, yeah.
Um, if you look very closely, you can see there's like reeds and rushes in the background of areas.
Ha, ha, I see it now. Sorry, but you're right, you really have to look.
You do have to strain a little bit.
That is very faint.
But it's not shown at all where you'd expect it to be, um, both for the flats and for. The giant wetland complex, um, up near Hortonville.
Alright, this house is great, one's right on the other side of that wetland.
So overall comments on wetlands, so we need to add rivers to legend. And add, or check. Check wet, wetlands.
Put in bigger reeds.
Yeah, bigger reeds. I, they actually were bigger and I made them smaller.
Or maybe just darker.
Darker for sure, yeah. Alright, cool. Good, good, good suggestions, so. Um, I've started almost all of. Um, I've started almost all of the other ones at this point. Um, I spent a huge amount of time on the future land use one because there's no ready-made data for it. Like this one, I could just, you know, download the roads. And, you know, you can't even really go parcel by parcel, because like, some are half, you know. So hopefully, fingers crossed, by the next meeting, I mean, we don't have too many meetings left, so here across by the next meeting, I'll have a handful of them, because I, I hopefully can make the final strides on those in the next few weeks. As long as more disasters don't happen in the meantime.
Well, I'm not listening to the weather forecast for Friday.
My daughter's antibiotic treatment is over this week, so hopefully that'll be behind us. So, uh, all right, so let me go back to with the little bit of time we have remaining. That actually took longer than I expected, so quickly we did only one map. I don't know if it makes sense to go to the Google Doc or not, but we had, uh, maybe it does, because we have our historian here too, so. Um, let me stop sharing this and pull up the.
What's the Google Doc?
Uh, so it just added a few more things to the text that we didn't have before. Um, I think I can just pop this reduced share. System window. Town plan. All right, cool. So. I think that was, I mean, you, you've done a lot of edits, but I think they were, you didn't add like a lot, a lot of changes in one particular area.
There were a couple of areas, I think there were two items where you said, we need something here and I.
Yeah, those are very helpful. I had a number of those.
Significant items.
Yeah, but I think though, I'll, I'll show those too, because I think the main areas of change were, um, historic sites is basically entirely new, which I think we can just kind of quickly look at. So there's a blob of text here that is, I think, copied from the state archaeologist. Yeah, this, at least the second part of it is just pretty much straight copied. Um, I don't know if you remember, it was two years ago now, I think, believe it or not, we, we got a blurb from the state archaeologist. It's kind of amazing how time flies. Um, but then, ooh, this scroll bar. Wow, maybe I should go with the map, um, scroll down differently. So anyway, the, the main gist of the state archaeologist is, of course, native peoples. They only sort of briefly mention, um, the European contact part, which is. All right, so anyway, then we get into we don't really have any, so there's really nothing that compels any protection, other than for burial sites, you probably know this. Um, burial sites are protected by the state. You can't disturb burial sites, even if they're unmarked. So, that's about it. Other than that, you know, you're sort of recommended that you contact the state archaeologists if you discover something in your, in your field or whatever, some, you know, if you, you plow in and you, you hit some remains of a, I don't know, I guess find a cache of arrowhead or something, you probably just want to give them a call. They're probably interested. But there's nothing that could actually, you could actually do beyond that. So we could say, you know, something about stone walls are worth preserving for, you know, because they're historical remnants and, um, irreplaceable historic assets, but also survey markers. But then we get into sort of the more interesting part, and that's sort of identifying certain areas to call out with, um, as being particularly important. So Belmont Village, I, we don't have, I don't have too much else to say about it, but it's state, um, register of historic places, so it's a designated historic village. Uh, the Green Mountain Cottage was very recently added to the national historical rec- uh, record in addition to the state. Fire Tower is about to be added to the state, and it's on the, um, whoa, what's going on? It just took a mind of its own.
John, yeah, is there anything we can say about why these were deemed worthy of being included in the state or national registers?
Okay, my computer just started to go crazy. Yeah, that's a really good question. Do you see this? It's just gone. Zoom has decided to take over. I, I'm sure there are reasons for that all. I didn't have, oh my God, it's doing it again. Something's wonky. So I don't know them offhand, and I, you know, this, you know, I believe it just adding those little things took quite a few hours to do.
You didn't know you could do that to your computer, did you?
All right, I think it's sort of back now. Let's try to do this.
For the moment.
Yeah.
My presumption is that they had to apply, because there's something of, like some modern house that was, um,
Yeah.
on the other side of 103. That's on the National Registry.
Yeah, it is.
Why don't you list that?
Can't even find it.
No, it's called Corbu.
Why, why is that not listed here though?
Uh, I didn't put it on.
But it's on the National Register.
Yeah, I could put it on. So it's, um, it's there because it was designed by architects trained by, um, the, in the Bauhaus School of Architecture. It's, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But it's like one of these up the, that beat that real bad dirt road trying to find it.
No, it's just at the end of, it's at Dolly and Shunpike, it's right on the corner. Um, Dolly and Shunpike.
Yeah, Dodge Road.
I thought it was on Roger Hill Road.
No.
Dolly and Shunpike is, is, um,
Yeah, it's not.
The two ladies. Help me, John.
Yeah, it's the.
It's across the street.
No, it's somewhere up Dodge Road, like.
Not Dodge Road.
Not Dodge Road, no.
It's right up that road.
I can show you exactly where it is if you want, on the map.
What's, what's else look like?
Because I tried to look at some other piece of garbage.
It's a cement.
I know where it is.
With less.
So if you're going up Dolly Road and you hit Shunpike, it is the very last house on the left. And you might actually access it from, um, Shunpike Two?
No.
No, it's from Dolly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You access it from Dolly Road. Uh, and in fact, uh, I had a long conversation with them one day about, because they wanted a burn permit, and I said, that, that's fine, you can have, you know, you can do the burn and all that. But if we ever have to come in here with a fire truck, it ain't gonna happen. Then what do you mean? Well, drive, the gate, to get in the driveway was about five feet off the road, and it was just the width of my pickup in the stone wall. I says, no way a fire truck's coming in here.
Yeah.
So the, within, within six months, I think it was, they, I don't know, cut some trees and made some adjustments.
Yeah, that's why it makes sense to have these recommendations.
Because that, that place was for sale, or something like a million or two.
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 Has it sold?
I don't know.
But it was also the major property across the road from it too. So it was a big land sale.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was a huge, um, because where the big power line crosses, um, down on Russellville Road there, uh, it goes clear down to there.
Yep.
Uh, because that's where they were, uh, had a log landing down there, and logged that out, what, three years ago?
I don't know. I don't remember. Um, so I could add that back in. I didn't put it on here, um, but it's true, it is on the National Registry, which is, uh, it shares with Crowley, of course. And the Green Mountain Cottage was recently added, and there's, I have the document with the application and the approval, so I, I do have all the information from Green Mountain Cottage. And I, you know, probably reading the Corbu one, you could get all the information for that. I guess I could, I could add that one in pretty easily. Um, so the state registry stuff, I don't always have the supporting documentation for. I think the village is just, you know, it's, it's rare to have so many different homes on the registry in one place. There's only a, like a handful of places in the village that aren't in the state, um, registry. And actually ironically, the blacksmith's shop is one of them. It's actually not on the registry because of supposedly some modifications that were made to it, which I thought was, yeah, is that interesting? It was excluded on purpose.
It's strange, because I'm not aware of modifications. I, I'm aware of a lot of different uses.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, I can show you this. I, I was sort of shocked when I saw it. I was like, oh, that seems like the one I'm kind of definitely would be on, but, um, you know. Um, maybe you could add a blurb about how many homes in the village are, are on it too.
Yeah, there's actually right there by the blacksmith's shop, there's a mill dam.
Well, the remnants of it, yeah.
A- actually, um, we've used it to stop a, uh, oil leak in the village.
Oh, yeah? Well, it's creative.
There's a what?
Ah, for crying out loud, I don't know.
Mill Dam.
Oh, yeah, that's the one that just broke apart.
Did it break in the stone?
The concrete, if you're looking at it downstream, the right-hand side went.
Yeah, I'm not surprised, I mean.
It's, it got tilted and it's now a big, bigger opening for the stream than there was before.
Well, it got hit pretty hard.
Oh, yeah.
And then, um, other than structures, have the, a sort of blurb here about, sort of like the railroad history, um, centered around the Summit Cut. Um, you know, we have that sign up on 103 for the railroad history too. Um, we're just sort of mentioning the few things that are kind of most noteworthy, the Mammoth and the meeting of the trains. And then a pretty, much more significant detail about the Crown Point Road, which is largely from what Dennis sent us.
And there's a number of markers, remember he pointed them out.
Yeah, yeah. So they're listed on here too, so. So it's a little bit heavy on Crown Point Road, it may be light on the others, but, so are there other things to add? Got a note here for add.
Now, now that, that gentleman that was injured building the railroad through, up through, where did that actually?
That's down in Cunningham.
Okay. Because I've heard stories about it happened up here in Mount Holly. And I just.
Well, they were doing a very similar activity here. You know, the black powder charges, so.
It, it was amazing, the guy lived.
Right, very famous, Gage.
And in fact, I think his skull is down in the museum in Washington there, huh?
Didn't Harvard or somebody get it?
Somebody, somebody got it.
Harvard or somebody looked at it.
Because I, I saw a notation on it somewhere recently.
They might be doing another walk soon.
So anything else for historic sites that we think is, I mean, anything jump off the top of your head? I mean, we have countless, you know, sort of ruins. We have countless cellar holes and, I, I didn't really want to get into any of that, honestly. Actually, I did, actually, now that I got you.
You already have the thing for Yale Road, so that's covered.
So the one stone wall I did add, this sort of remnant, I, I put up in a different section here. Um, so do you see this here in the middle? Well, you may not see it on the screen. I said, I mentioned stone walls being cultural artifacts. I said, particularly noteworthy stone wall marks the historic boundary between Ludlow and Jackson's Gorge. So, that's your wall. So I just added that in there, because I, I think that's something that is worth preserving if we can.
There was also the Maple Hill with the maples and the stone walls.
Yeah, but I don't, that's more, I think, in the, the scenic.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have scenic areas in the previous section, which we could, um, definitely add to. I think we actually have it already. But for historic sites, is there anything, um, beyond what we've mentioned that's worth, like, really calling out?
Sears Cottage is not worth it.
Because we used to have it in old plans, we had like Summit Station was on there, lots of things that are actually gone now. Which, you know, sort of speaks to how well we, you know, but. And like I said, there's, I mean, there's really countless, there's, there's dozens and dozens, dozens of, of historic homes around town, but I, you know, I don't really want to.
Well, it's amazing how many Sears houses are, came out of the Sears and Roebuck Cave.
I don't see it happen over there, right, at the, the museum.
The front, front porch, basically.
Because I, I've got one next door to me.
What do you think, Andy? You think there's anything we could ask?
I, I found the, um, um, state's website on their registry, and it gives a little explanation about some of the properties, so I, I could add a little something to Green Mountain Cottage and if I can find something on the village, I can add that too. Uh, I can't think of anything else though.
What about the camps at Nineveh or any of that, the wilderness community? I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, does that qualify as for?
I mean, we've never, town plans, official town stuff has never acknowledged all of that, but it's certainly been a huge part of that, part of the, you know, part of the town.
It, it just seems dating from the nineteen sixties isn't old enough to qualify as a historic site.
I thought it was from the thirties.
The lower camps up in Plymouth, yeah.
All right, never mind then.
The, the area, I mean, I've been doing a little research on the area, and there were several schools and farms and mills up there was.
Yeah.
It, to me, it's interesting how, um, well-settled that area used to be and no longer is, and you can find, as you were saying, cellar holes all along the, the sides of the roads there.
Maybe.
It was industrial. That's the sort of surprising thing.
Yeah.
Is that the land use history of Nineveh is in, straight up industrial, commercial. Like that, it was a big time, and there's various, the Hastings and, and the Spaffic Iron Company.
They empowered the, um, the furnace in Tyson.
Yeah.
Right.
And tiny pond it too.
I think there's what, a tomb of the unknown soldier.
Yeah, it's over the border.
It's right near Nineveh.
Yeah.
But what about, um, at least saying in there, something about the museum as a repository of the history of.
Artifacts and so forth.
Artifacts and manufacturing and schools, one like, one room schoolhouses, there were what, twelve of those, nine or twelve of those?
Yeah, you know, I wonder, and I, I'm trying, I'm a little fuzzy on whether we did this or not, but that also could be, didn't we have in community facilities?
Well, at one time, there was three post offices there in town.
In community facilities, we ought to see something about the museum.
Well, Hillville had one.
Like I said, that I know about. I didn't come here until the sixties.
This is what we have right now. You can see it toward the top. No Halling Community. So what I'm not clear, is there two different organizations? What I've never been clear on is there, there seem to be two different organizations. Is that right?
The Historical Society?
There's Historical Society and Historical Museum?
No.
No, it's the, uh.
I don't know how like, community historical.
It's a museum, I think.
Museum.
I believe, yes.
Okay, but, uh, like on the grand list, the blacksmith's shop is owned by a different entity.
Well, that's a mistake on the grand list, because it's all owned by the same.
It's owned by the same.
Okay, because it shows like a different contact.
Well, you know what it is, it went, that's where the museum originally was, before they got the Perkins House. And it might have been under the nineteen sixties, when they first started, and they never changed it when they became
They can change their name when they got the new building.
All right.
Well, there are two names in the, in the records, so there's Mount Holly, Historical Society, I think, or something like that, and then there's Community Historical Museum.
That was on the blacksmith's shop.
Okay, anyway, that was confusing to me. I wasn't clear on, but there is just one group.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we could add something here about what's, what's, what the collection is, right?
Yeah. Steven will write that up.
You want to write a sentence about the, what the collection is, what the?
Or pull stuff from the verge.
I tried to pull stuff from the website or something, but I, I wasn't sure.
Uh, there's something on Facebook too, um, that Robin maintains.
There's all kinds of stuff that's been printed in.
Could you guys just come up with like a short blurb, just to add to this, that says something about the collection? Because right now we just have the locations, which is probably too little.
I could ask Dennis to write it, but it won't be short.
That's what I mean. So why don't you and
Robin.
You and Robin come up with like two sentences on what the collection entails. So I mean, it's like cultural artifacts or history of blah, blah, blah. Um, that would be great. Um, that would be great, so. Um, alright, so we're running out of time here, but the, I think the main other thing we kind of, or I, I did some work on, I think you did as well, is um, sort of shoring up, no pun intended, a little bit of the flood stuff. So maybe we can just briefly go through that, um. Where was that? That was in Flood Resilience.
Uh, page.
I don't know, I don't have the pages here, but.
Seventy.
So let's see, what is new? It's a little bit hard to remember. So a little bit more information about the local hazard mitigation plan, and so this is worth mentioning to you all. This is new. And I think, in my opinion, it's like, well, I added it, but I, I think it's a very good idea. Um, where is the sentence I'm referring to? The Mount Holly Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, as most recently adopted, is incorporated into this plan by reference and provides more information about flood and erosion hazards in town. So that was recommended that we do that, it's actually in the flood hazard, uh, sorry, not flood hazard, it's in the local hazard mitigation plan that's, it suggests that we do that. So there are a number of action items in that plan that um could become then action items for the, the town plan.
Hey, where are you with that?
Here I have more, I'm making errors and inconsistencies about capitalizing town, I think I was driving Andy crazy. I gotta go back and correct all those. Lowercase, right, that's where we're going, okay. Like every time I would do it, it would like, I would get it wrong, I would like, forgot which one we decided on. Yeah, see, there's a whole bunch of them here. Um, but anyways. And a little bit more information about some of the funding sources for mitigation efforts, which is going to become an issue. So as part of the discussion we had with Jeff today, um, there is gonna have to be, I think, a renewed interest in preventing kind of, you know, getting things out of the way of, of dangerous situations. Um, you know, for the most part, we'll need homeowners and property owners to agree to buy outs. It's not something, it's not an eminent domain seizure kind of thing, it's not a taking. But it would be something, if a homeowner wants to avoid repetitive loss, then there is funding available for that. Um, there's a couple of properties that were very severely um damaged uh, or threatened in this fast storm where they might, those might be things we want to look at. Um, let's see what else, so these are the two funding sources, we just sort of just mentioned them, Flood Resil- Resilient Community Fund. These things could also be used for upsizing culverts. We're gonna try to do as much upsizing as we can um through the um FEMA restoration. We're gonna try to do, you know, Jeff's gonna see how much we can get out of them for that. Or whether the town can just buy, you know, like a truckload of culverts, which we could use for replacing inadequate driveway culverts, so. I mean, the, one of the issues is, you know, the culvert costs have gone through the roof in the last couple of years. So, you know, homeowners can we just, can typically not really easily afford a couple thousand dollars of culvert plus uh labor to upsize their culverts on their own. So, you know, we're just gonna have to think a little bit creatively about how we let that happen. Um, let's see, I think that's most of it in Flood Resilience. We have a couple of placeholders here. Yeah, so here's another one here in the yellow, like we just need to add some information about, you know, my informal survey driving around town is a lot of the damage occurred where uh culverts were inadequate or stormwater system wasn't inadequate, or maybe the ditches were full or whatever.
A lot of it, uh brush trees or whatever got into the culvert and so consequently.
Right.
It had to go somewhere.
Right, so that's where you're trimming trees and all that debris removal is a kind of a big. Um, okay, so that's Flood Resilience, not a whole lot of really juicy stuff there, but on the last thing I think we have time for is in Emergency Management. There's a little bit more there, I think. Were there any other areas that we had more substantial changes? That you remember?
Nothing I can recall.
Right, and so the other thing um besides this, I guess, that I can think of is by the time we're probably done with this, we will probably also have, or nearly have, um, a Belmont Plan from the municipal planning grant. And so I have a placeholder here, I don't know, I, I haven't seen any text yet, so let's just keep that in mind. Uh, we had a conversation with the um, the consultant today. Um, hopefully we'll be seeing that pretty soon. But should it be something that we expect it to be and be beneficial, it might be good to also include that by reference, like we did with the local hazard mitigation plan. But we'll, we'll see, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. So, let's see, Emergency Management.
You could always say at the time of writing, the Belmont Plan is in the works.
Right.
And will be included by reference.
I, I'd rather know what's in it before we.
Or is available, will be included.
Right, I mean, you know what I mean, like, I'd rather know it's something we want before adding that text. But I think it will be good, but we, I just want to make, ah. Using this mouse is very difficult. Um, alright, so what did we add here? I'm not entirely sure.
Where?
Uh, one thing that's different here that's added is, I can't remember which section it was, preparedness or. So one thing that Ludlow had apparently in, at their disposal for this emergency was a list of properties that are at risk. And we talked about that, I think in a variety of different ways relating to our flood bylaw. So, you know, we, we started to put together a list of properties, the select board asked us to, to do that. We sort of refined it with the Regional Planning Commission a little bit. And we found, you know, the ones that were gonna be different from what we had before and so on. But I think we at least have the start of putting together an inventory that could be used in a term, in, in a disaster to, I don't know, for instance, send out a warning or start an evacuation, um, or evaluate damages afterwards. Um, and, or, or, you know, specifically to go to, to look, to get that photographic evidence we were talking about. So, um, I, I think I put that in here, that would be nice to have. Uh, I've talked to Faith about maybe trying to start putting that together. So, that's, that's new. Um. And maybe even incorporating it into the Emergency Management Plan. Um, I don't know why the, the, the shelter at the school didn't open. Um, I guess they couldn't get a hold of anybody. It sort of raises the question about whether that should be a shelter in the Emergency Management Plan. Anyway, so I'll be working, I think, with Jeff and hopefully others um over the next few years to make sure that our shelters are adequate, you know, I think we're gonna want to have generators at the shelters. Um, Jeff now has a radio, which is good, so Billy can, Jeff can chat on the emergency situation. Um, so anyway, so I think we uh, you know, we'll be, by the end of this, we'll be better off for the next one. And I mean, unfortunately, we'll be more. So, I don't know, is there anything else we should talk about before we close up shop here? It's a little bit hard to go through all of the various changes, cause there's been, you know, thank you to Andy for um working many nights trying to clean up mistakes and adding lots of better text to what I had.
Only marginally better in a few places. It's looking pretty good, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think we're getting there, and so the, I think, you know, in, I don't know, see, there goes again, what the heck? Remnants. I'm not touching it, look at it, it's just going. So, we don't really have probably what we need for this, for the educational facilities, and that's because we haven't been able to have that conversation yet. I don't know what to say about that, then I'll keep trying. And um, I think we're just gonna have to put something in. Sound good?
We'll figure something out.
I mean, I think there's, there was a school board who are willing to talk to us and Liz, I believe she's the treasurer for the school board. Something like that. So.
I, I think there's school board members who'd be happy to share some thoughts and help flush this out.
Yeah, so I think we're just gonna have to try to get it done one way or the other. Um, we've tried to involve as many people as we can overall, so. Um, I think we're sort of on the final path here, so are there things that we haven't, like a missing, we have blind spots here that we haven't considered? And I want like eleventh hour, kind of like, oh shit moments.
We'll find some.
We'll find some stuff, but uh, is there anything that we haven't discussed that you, you kind of have in the back of your mind, wait a minute, maybe we should? No? No is a good answer, by the way. Happy with that, just um, thought I'd ask. Alright, so anything for tonight before we close it up?
No, I'll find that.
Alright. I think we didn't have anything else, public comments? Oh, nobody on Zoom? Alright. Peter, do you have a public comment?
Great meeting, guys.
Thank you, Peter. Um, upcoming meetings, so let's stick with the, let's stick with the plan and we can do our.
Where do you live to the plan?
I don't know if there's a reason to.
Alright. Stick with the usual, and it's gonna be.
August seventh, second, right?
The second of August at seven, and.
I'll be on Zoom at best for that.
How did they just get? I just got a Ned Swanberg, isn't that DEC? I don't know, some venture's popped up for tomorrow, substantial damage, something. Anyways, so the next regular will be the sixteenth at seven. So those work for everybody?
The second of that.
Second and the sixteen, not for you?
No, but I'll.
Okay.
I'll Zoom if I can.
Okay.
Zoom it.
Um. And I, I, I think, you know, once we get to the next regular meeting, we'll have a better idea on what uh, what we're looking for in terms of a hearing. Um, you, you had a conflict, didn't you, or maybe it was Jeff? Somebody had a conflict with the September meeting?
I'm gonna be away um, starting the sixteenth or.
Of September?
No, sorry, the twelfth, whatever that um Wednesday is.
The thirteenth of September approximately?
Yeah.
Okay. So we might be, at this point, we might be looking for October, which kind of gives us a little breathing room anyway. I think that still gives us enough time if we can do October for us, November for Select Board, Regional Planning Commission, I think they meet in December? Although they may not. It gets tight, but I think, I think we can pull it off. So, I, it seems very tight to try to do a September hearing, given that we don't have a final draft yet. October seems good.
Yeah.
At this point.
Should work.
Okay, it's only a month slipped, so I think that's, you know, it's only my fault, I haven't, just the maps have been way slower than I hoped.
You've been going off.
Yeah, right.
We all.
Yeah.
I mean, come on, you don't have a life.
I don't work hard enough. Um, okay, and I think, you know, just sort of a little bit of carrot here. I think once we get to that point, we can go back to one meeting a month, what do you think?
Yes.
So, won't that be nice for the first time in years?
I don't know what to do.
Yeah, right, I don't believe that at all, okay, so.
Um, the November one, are we expected to be at the Select Board meeting?
Let's say that again.
The November meeting, if that's a Select Board hearing?
I don't know how they'll wanna do it.
They'll be there.
Okay, I don't know how they'll wanna do it if they do a separate meeting or not.
Okay.
I don't know, it's up to them entirely. Um, or whether, you know, whether there will be a great attendance or not, I don't know. I know the last town plan, they did it at the school, but there were only probably fifteen, twenty, maybe not even twenty, maybe fifteen people in attendance.
You never know.
You never know, you never know.
Could be fifteen this time and a hundred next time.
Yeah, you never know. Um, so, yeah, we'll have to cross all those bridges and um, figuring out logistics, if it involves the school, then it's a whole other thing.
Why?
To schedule the auditorium or, this room can probably only fit um, many people.
If the school gives you a problem, you can always use the alcohol as well.
What, what do you, how many do you think you can get in there? How many people do you think that'll hold? We go through the community center, maybe that would work.
Well, yeah, the community center, but the alcohol is all about.
Alcohol is bigger, isn't it?
Is the alcohol bigger?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they got, they had ninety some, a hundred chairs.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, now it's a little less of used tables, but if you just line it.
Okay, so that's definitely bigger, the community center only has probably like twenty-five chairs. Maybe thirty.
If you get really upset with somebody, it's annoying.
You know, if you use even the tables for the dinners, we're looking at.
Okay.
Somewhere around a.
Yeah, parking's a little better here.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a good, no, it's a good idea. It's a good idea for sure, cause I don't think the town office.
Not a lot of people.
The downside of not using the town office, of course, is that we miss out on that, but I don't know, we'll figure it out. Alright, I think we're done, guys. Eight fifty-one, Meeting is adjourned, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Production services by Okemo Valley TV.